Good evening, everyone. I'm waiting for a response. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, thank you. Welcome to the October 23 regular meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. I hope everyone's enjoying the nice fall weather out there, my favorite time of year. And Halloween's right over in the corner. The board customarily holds a moment of silence. We would invite everybody to join us as we observe this moment of silence and maybe contemplate the special celebration that we have this evening. Thank you. And now please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Manager, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I believe we'll go right on to special actions. And it is my pleasure and just makes me very happy and proud to be able to read the proclamation that we have for the Newtown Township, the Council Rock Newtown. And I will read it and then I will ask the coach if he has anything to say this evening to the group. And we'll take some pictures. But it's a special treat. So it starts with every proclamation, it starts with a whereas. In recognition of Council Rock Newtown Little League, whereas it was originally founded in 1953 as the Council Rock Little League and then eventually branching off to become Council Rock Newtown Little League. And whereas the Council Rock Newtown 12-year-old All-Star team consisting of Gavin Cottle, Rocco DeBronzo, Wesley Steves, Brody Gage, Grayson Gage, Dean Hamilton, Severio Longo, Tyler Neeld, Braden Pfeifer, Nicholas Schiller, Will Civeteer, Ryan Yule, Tyler Wexler, and team manager Brad Hamilton and coaches Kyle Neeld and Doug Pfeifer. Whereas the Council Rock Newtown Little League 12-year-old team had an exceptional year, winning the Pennsylvania District 30 title, the Pennsylvania Section 6 title, the Pennsylvania State Title, the Mid-Atlantic Region Title, Security berth in the Little League World Series Tournament, one of only two teams in Council Rock Newtown Little League's 71-year history to reach this level of achievement, and finished in the top five in the United States Tournament and top 10 in the world. Yay. Now it be proclaimed that the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors enthusiastically celebrates the Council Rock Newtown Little League and their many accomplishments of the 2024 12-year-old All-Star Team and their magical season.
First, I just want to thank you for having us here. We really do appreciate it. And just say a few things about just the Newtown community in general. I will tell you, you know, since we've been back, we have been greeted by so many people within Newtown with such open arms and graciousness, meals and township supervisor meetings. And it shows you what a community can do when they get behind something like these 13 boys that are here. It's made the journey so much more fun, exciting, and something that they'll always remember. And, you know, talking about Little League and how long we've been around, it's a nonprofit organization. There's one thing that I realized as I went through this is there's so much pay for play anymore with baseball and sports in youth. One thing where you have to win to get there. Pay your way to play in these tournaments. These boys have worked really hard for the last seven years and being honored, I think, is an exciting thing for them, but I also think it's well deserved for all the work they've put in. And we appreciate you having us here tonight. The other thing to you guys is, you know, you protect those fields for us. We've played on Chandler. We've played on all of the vets' fields. And those fields are important to a nonprofit organization. And as silly as it sounds, my thank you for that because we compete as a nonprofit against the for-profit baseball teams. The biggest thing that we have in our armory are the fields. And you guys allow us access to those fields. And you give us that first access and we appreciate that. These boys have come through all those fields. They've left their mark on all those fields and I hope the kids behind us continue to do that. We have a very healthy organization run by Andrew Mouski. Our 10s did great this year. Our 11s did great. But stepping even further back from that, we have a bunch of in-house players who may not play further than when they're 15. And we have access to fields and players that get on those fields. And just being able to spend those 15 games with their friends from school who may play travel, but these kids have access to is just so important. And we appreciate you allowing us as an organization, I'm also a board member with Andrew, that access. It's really important to the core of what we do with these kids. And sometimes lightning in bottle and next thing you know, you're on ESPN looking like you actually know what you're doing. But it's really the kids and what they can even, you guys. It may be hidden. It may be something that you don't see a lot of, but you guys allowing that is the first step to these kids achieving what they have, which is their dream. So thank you very much and we appreciate it.
Would you like to come up for some pictures? Thank you, Megan. We are officially in recess. Now call us back to order. Thank you, everyone. What a celebration. That brings us, our next order of business is the public comment. So I'd ask anyone who would like to make a public comment to come up to the microphone. Please state your community, which development you might be in. And I'm just going to ask one thing that anyone who comes up to make a public comment. Please refrain from making personal attacks or name-calling. I don't think we'll have to do that right now, so. But let's keep an agreeable agreeable frame of reference here.
Hi, I'm Frank McCarron. I live in Delancey Court. I wanted to make two comments. One, I saw that the fire chief is here tonight and I was hoping that he could address or you could ask him to address, if not at this meeting, then at another meeting, his view on the volunteer firefighters and the adequacy of their, that staffing for our township. You know, I really enjoy going to the restaurants in the town, go for drinks, you know, go to Adana for drinks, go out for meals. And, but I always think to myself, okay, it's after 6 o'clock, the paid firefighters have left. And if there's these nice crowded restaurants, if there's an event, we have to round up the volunteer firefighters. And in my view, I would like to see us to raise revenue to have paid firefighters from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. And then have overnight enough stipends for volunteers or incentives of a kind for volunteers to sleep at the firehouse and be ready to go. And I know Mr. Lewis mentioned the formation of this the Fire Protection Fund. I guess there was a law change and you can charge up to 10 mils for firefighter services. And so the emergency services were moved over. And the problem being, in my head, 10 mils just pays for what we have today. You know, and I don't know, no, I've not seen the budget. I don't even know if it pays for what we have today. So I think it's something, if necessary, have a fire study done, something that really assesses a long-term view, how to pay for it, not taxes, you know, some other ideas. The second item was that, Mr. Fisher, you received a letter from Delancey Court on October 4. I'm not speaking on behalf of Delancey Court HOA Board of Directors. I'm not on the HOA Board of Directors. Residents also received this letter. And as you may recall, 413 Durham Road, the developer originally wanted to build 27 townhomes, which was a lot for that little five-acre property. They then tried to revise it to 20. And that was still a lot. And so it went forth, the other conditional use PS2 was was a childcare center and a medical office building. And the issue with that, you know, I, the attorney for the developer came in and said, well, we had a traffic study and there's not going to be any additional traffic in the area. The flow-through is going to be the same. But what they did not talk about was the in-and-outs. I had calculated on my own that I thought 1,000 times a day, a car is going to go in or out of that new community, that development for those things. And the developer had, I guess, his own traffic study that said 800 times a day, a car is going to go in and out. That's something he didn't share with you at the time. And, you know, my personal view is that left turns in from that, into that development, if I'm looking right, I'm going to have a hard time seeing traffic come towards me. But another thing that worries me, and honestly, when cars have a hard time, they go up to Newtown Grant and go through and drive around. But another thing that worries me is that PennDOT won't allow left turns. And so cars will come out of that community, go right, go up to Delancey Court, turn in and use Delancey Court as a turnaround. I personally, I'd rather see them build 21 townhomes and have the traffic of that, even though it's as terrible as that is, than have 800 times what their traffic study person says. I say 1,000 times a day, cars going in and out of that community. So I really don't know whether or not with what's been approved. PennDOT is going to decide on left turns and left turns out. It's something, if it's knowable early, I think that's good. I think what's been approved has been approved. But, you know, there's things I worry about what's being approved. I know you got a setback so that they're supposed to park in the back. But if you look at the plan they submitted, they didn't change the front to say no parking. They just said for now, parking's in the back. So when is that going to become more parking in the front? So I know it concerns the board of, the HOA Board of Delancey Court, concerns me as a resident. So I just want to bring that to your attention. I hope you have an opportunity to look at the letter and respond at some point.
Thank you. Just as an aside, I did pass that letter on to the other supervisors. Okay, any others? All right. We'll move along. I believe the reports are committees, boards, and committees. I see Peggy Driscoll is here. Please.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Planning Commission. Here to give you a brief synopsis of our October 15 meeting. We had two zoning hearing board applications, first one being Margaret and George Hindley at 15 John Quill Drive. The applicants are seeking increased impervious surface of 34%, where 30% is the maximum permitted to build a patio and expand the front walkway. The commission recommended that the applicants consider some stormwater mitigation. We recommend that the Board of Supervisors take no action on this application. Next, we had Mark Winterstein at 483 Linton Hill Road. The applicant is seeking a front yard setback of 63 feet, where 100 feet are required and the current existing non-conformity is 71 feet to accommodate a covered portico, which has already been erected without any permits or inspections. The commission recommends that the board take no position on this application. And lastly, we had a JMZO amendment, the electric vehicle charging station. This amendment has been reviewed and the commission had recommended our board adopt it. But Wrightstown Township had recommended a number of minor changes, including elimination of the requirement to maintain adequate working order for the stations. After lengthy discussion, agreed that the Board of Supervisors accept Wrightstown's recommendation and in a separate action, draft a maintenance ordinance for the charging stations. This separate ordinance would address the location, number of stations, advertising, et cetera. Of particular concern was the possibility that in order to satisfy ADA requirements, EV stations would be located in prime parking spots adjacent to the handicap parking spots. Our recommendation would be that this separate ordinance be developed for Newtown only as there are more shopping areas within the limited, with limited and we would have different concerns as far as giving up existing parking spaces for EV chargers. And that was all we had. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, I had some resident asking about the, about this ordinance for electric charging stations. So I'm not quite getting what you're saying, a separate, a separate ordinance just for Newtown to, based on what Wrightstown said.
Well, we had, we had approved the JMZO, the ordinance, we had it approved. And then Wrightstown had sent a letter to our solicitor with some proposed changes to the, pretty much to the verbiage. I have it written down here. Our solicitor reviewed the recommendations and they want to make changes in definitions H21A, 21B, deleting the subsections that EV stations must always be in working order. And we wanted an explanation because we had already recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors. And part of it was the maintenance of them, who would be responsible for the maintenance of these EV stations.
Can I hold you up for just a second? So these are not commercial charging stations? These are charging stations maintained by the township? Is that what this is about?
Well, this would be the township because the thought was that they said to remove the general use because it's defined under, the term is not used anywhere else in the ordinance. That with the removal of the language, they must always be in working order. The thought was this type of requirement should not be included in the zoning code, but it's more suited for a property maintenance code. Because we don't include fences, pools, or anything like that in the zoning code. So we would have a separate ordinance for Newtown only. Because first of all, we, we have so much more commercial development than Wrightstown or Upper Makefield Township with our shopping centers. And we had a lot of concerns about the placement of these EV charging stations. I don't, I don't think we've had any requests for any.
Wasn't there a request for some by the, by the hotel and the comments?
And they did. They're privately, they put, they put two of them. There are two back there.
There are two back there privately owned? But this ordinance would not cover those?
No, not privately owned, no. Because you can't, I guess, mandate what somebody does in their home. That's their responsibility.
Well, this parking lot is private property.
Yes, yes.
Same within the shopping centers?
Well, we don't have any EV stations right now. And I don't believe we've had any, I mean, I haven't heard anything of anyone requesting to put them in.
Okay.
And we also, we also had concerns about where they would be placed. And do EV charging stations have to be ADA compliant? Do they have to be an EV station that is also a handicap spot?
Okay, I guess I got to look over this ordinance again. It's been around for a long time and I haven't looked at it lately, so thanks.
The ordinance that you're mentioning for Newtown Township, you're talking about that ordinance being for us.
For us only.
But the ownership of the stations would be dependent upon whoever owned the particular property. So we don't own these stations. We're just establishing the ordinance in regards to letting them know where these stations could be.
I think they had removed something about, I have a lot of notes here. They removed the language that they must always be in working order.
Yeah, but that's not, but why would the township be responsible for that? Like Mr. Mack, Brixmore owns the property. So I'm assuming Brixmore would be responsible for the maintenance of those stations, correct?
Yes, yes.
We're just establishing an ordinance of how it can be done.
Correct. I mean, we want them, if we have them in the township, you want them to be in working order.
Sure, absolutely. I think the only place that I ever see these stations are where Rita's Water Ice is.
And they're gone.
Are they?
Yeah, the tenant that was in Team Logic in the front left, the building's empty, that, they were for their employees.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So right now, the only EV stations we have in the township are behind the hotel, which are privately owned. So it's up to the center. I mean, I don't think anybody's knocking on the door to put them in. We haven't heard anything. I don't know if the supervisors have.
Well, it's something that's going to have to be done.
But this would give just Newtown Township control over where they're placed, how they're maintained. I mean, do we want them in prime parking spots? And do they need to be ADA compliant?
I guess, Mr. Solicitor, that's something for...
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that offhand. I would suggest that any publicly-owned facility would most likely be required to be ADA accessible and ADA compliant. And even any privately-owned facility may have to be ADA compliant if the private owner meets the requirements for having to comply with the ADA in the first place.
Something we're going to be saying again and we'll work on it.
Okay. Any other questions? I might just mention that I did go over to where the ark is off of Twining Bridge Road. Remember, we had a discussion about that, whether that building was still there. That building is still there. They did, as you know, on the corner of, I'm trying to think, the corner of Twining Bridge Road and Declaration, there was a house that was taken down there.
Yes, the one that was back in the woods.
No, it was a little, the barn was back in the woods, but the house was right out front.
Yeah, I think they are two separate properties. The ark is a little further up the road than where the toll, where the toll development's going to go.
Right. I just wanted to share that that building was still there where the ark.
Well, that's a good thing.
Okay, great. Anything else for Ms. Driscoll? Thank you, thank you very much. Comes to board member reports. I was going to mention that I got a couple of letters, one of them being from Delancey Court. And another one from Friends Village. I haven't shared that with the board yet. I just got it. I will pass that around. Did everybody get that one about the gas blowers?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see, we did, also some news that I, that we just got, I'm not sure if the rest of the board members got it, was the grant, the grant for the pedestrian bridge at Washington Crossing Road and Sycamore Street. That grant for almost a million dollars was approved. So we'll be looking at probably some plans on how to bring that, bring a bridge there and get it seeded and open it up. And that would be another way of crossing for pedestrians and maybe bicycles to get from the township in the borough. There is a shredding, shredding event at Holy Family College on Saturday. I don't, I don't remember the time. I'm guessing, I'm guessing mid-morning. So that's coming, that's coming Saturday. And there's also a drug take-back here on the township, at the township on Saturday morning. I think that goes into the afternoon. Again, I didn't get the time. I should have gotten the times. And so I have, is there anything?
I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Mack?
Yes, I attended the October 16 Sewer Authority Advisory Board meeting. And there were a couple of residents there and Julia Waldorf from the Newtown Borough Council was there. We had some concerns and questions about the 43% rate increase starting in 2026 and the proposed sewage treatment plant on lower Silver Lake Road, down the road from the Wawa site. Also, this past Monday, I had monthly Meet Mack Mondays Zoom meeting. And we discussed several topics, including the sewage treatment plant and rate increase, pedestrian safety, and other matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, anything?
Yes, I do have something, community service related. The Newtown Rotary is collecting used bicycles and portable sewing machines this Saturday at the St. Andrews, old St. Andrews on Sycamore. It's from 9 to noon and you can drive up and drop them off. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Clabro? Okay, thank you all. I'll move right along to public hearing, and Mr. Sanders, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing to consider enactment of an ordinance amending the joint municipal zoning ordinance. This is an ordinance that was previously enacted by all three municipalities in the jointure. It provides for the new uses, one called mixed-use development, and the other called town center apartment in the LI and OLI zoning districts in the jointure. Those districts are only in Newtown. And it provided for those two uses by right. After the ordinance was enacted, this board determined that it would rather have those two uses permitted by conditional use. The ordinance was drafted again to provide for those two uses by conditional use, and the ordinance is before the board this evening for consideration. It has been advertised, and it is appropriate for the board to consider a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the LI, OLI district to provide for mixed-use development and town center apartments by conditional use.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Do we have any questions from the board on this?
Yeah, let's make that motion.
I got a motion, do we have a second? Okay, a motion and a second? Any discussion from the board?
If I may?
Sure.
I contacted Wrightstown and Upper Makefield, and they, this past week, they approved this as well. And so, my understanding is if we approve it, it becomes effective immediately. Is that true?
Well, let me see, I think usually ordinance as such has become effective five days following their legal enactment. But this one notes that it shall become effective on the date that the last of the three townships enacts the ordinance, so that would be tonight, yes.
That would be yes, thank you.
And I will sign it if directed by the board.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to ask for public comment at this time during the public hearing?
Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of enacting the LI, OLI ordinance amendment, say aye. Aye. And the opposed? Motion carries five zero.
And that concludes our public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. No land development tonight? We have reports of officials, and we have our engineer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our one item on the agenda tonight is to recommend the award of the Newtown Business Commons Sidewalk Project. On October first, RVE reviewed the bids submitted for the project, and we received a total of five bids, with the base bid ranging from four hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars to seven hundred and one thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. We found no discrepancies in the low bidder, NJS Concrete LLC, in their bid of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. So, therefore, RVE recommends award of the base bid in the total amount of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars contingent upon funds being available and upon receiving authorization to award from all funding agencies.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second? A motion and a second? Any discussion from the board or questions for our engineer?
If I might?
Please.
I know that several residents, especially from Newtown Walk, have requested that the sidewalks, the trail leading from their crosswalk, which I have another question for you about that later.
Okay.
The Newtown Trail goes to the crosswalk and down to the border with the borough. That trail, that part of it, is a little bit below grade, let's say. There's no curb, I heard, and so forth. And I was wondering, since we received grants totaling about eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, and the winning bid was more like four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, if there's some way that we can change, I guess, the scope of the project to include that sidewalk, include a sidewalk going maybe from Terry Drive to the borough, where it currently is just the asphalt path? And especially after this crosswalk at Tara Boulevard, there's an issue with the curbing being missing, that sort of thing? And I looked over, thanks for sending me the contracts. You know, I'm not an expert in this, but I looked at some paragraphs there, and I don't wanna get into the nitty-gritty detail, but there are paragraphs that say, that mention how you can get additional or extra work. And if PennDOT, this is at the MTU, what's that, the multi-transportation?
MTF, Multimodal Transportation Fund.
Yeah. That grant is for around eight hundred thousand, something like that?
Eight hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. If PennDOT, it seems to me from my reading, that maybe if we go before PennDOT and ask if we can change this to include that stretch of, you know, wall, that might be a benefit to the community. Not only that, it was mentioned that there's going to probably be a bridge across the creek, which will connect the borough and Newtown. And these representatives, Perry Warren and Steve Santasaro, have lauded that as really something that is needed to connect Newtown Township with the borough. And here, we have an opportunity to connect another connection between Newtown and the borough, except we need to make it safe. And so, I was just curious if somehow, since we have these extra funds, maybe we can get permission from PennDOT or negotiate to include that bit maybe from Terry Drive all the way to the borough along Newtown Yardley Road? Is there any ability of that?
We can take a look at it. Since it's outside the scope of what was submitted for the grant, they may not approve that, to use the funds for that work. And we can look at a cost estimate to see what that work would amount to, and see if it would fall within, you know, what's in this base bid and what's being funded by the grants, to see if it would fall below that grant amount.
I think the residents would appreciate that, at least looking into it, and I don't know what the total procedure would be, but I know that you have meetings with PennDOT, pre-construction meetings you call them, or something like that?
Yeah, frequently, yeah.
And sometimes residents can actually attend those meetings. I've heard that you had a meeting with the Wawa on the sidewalks, where the pastor of the Crossing Community Church attended with PennDOT because they had questions about it. So, you know, I'm just wondering how the residents can get input into this if it's necessary with PennDOT.
I would just say, for that meeting we had on Monday, I invited the pastor out there because we had been communicating, because they did start work along Lower Silver Lake on his property. So, as a courtesy, I told him I would be out there, and we could take, you know, his questions. I wouldn't necessarily say that these meetings are open to the public. This was a meeting with PennDOT because it's part of their HOP permit for the Wawa project.
Right, that's a good matter, totally. But I just thought, I don't know what the process is, whatever can help, we would appreciate some input.
Sure, yeah, I can discuss with the township staff and see what we can do.
Okay.
Any other questions for our engineer?
I just have one question. Maybe I misunderstood what Mr. Mack was talking about, but are you talking about us going on to borough property and doing work on borough property?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, okay.
If you go down Newtown Yardley Road, you'll see this path that's below, practically below street level. And in some places, no curb, all on Newtown Township side. And then, there's a, I forget the name of the street, but there's about ten feet of sidewalk that's in the borough territory.
Is it Elm?
Excuse me?
Is it Elm Street?
Elm Street, maybe. I think it's Elm Street. And all I'm suggesting is that, well, it's another sidewalk that leads nowhere. We should have it leading at least to the crosswalk. And that would be on the township property. And it'd be part of the Newtown Trail. As you know, coming down the Newtown Trail, it goes around the Newtown Walk basin, and then it goes behind the Gulf Station, the trail, and it ends up at where the crosswalk is going to improve on Tara Boulevard. And then you go across the crosswalk, and then you can walk into town. That's the only, you can't walk on the other side of the street to the borough. And not that I wanna give the borough more business, but a lot of people want to do that and shop down there, so.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure we weren't impinging on the borough's property, because then we'd get into a situation of, are they gonna pay us? Okay, that's...
Well, they just have to let us connect to their sidewalk, that's all.
Gotcha. Thanks for clarifying.
I'd be interested in knowing how much it would cost to do that. So, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? I'll call, need to ask for a public comment. Any public comment on that? And this is the Business Commons Sidewalk.
Frank McCarron, Delancy Court. So, if I understand what I just heard, you've got three bids, four hundred and eighty to seven hundred thousand. You're required to take the low bid, but PennDOT was giving you a grant of eight hundred, eighty thousand, let's say, whatever it was, eight hundred and seventy thousand. So, if you take that low bid, what happens with the excess? You never get it? You give it back to PennDOT? It seems like it's gone. And if you wanna modify this, I don't know the legalese of this, of the process, but do you have to, like, not approve this and go and try to say, hey, we wanna use this eight hundred and eighty thousand for more of the project? You know, redefine the project, keep the eight eighty, but we wanna redefine the project? And then go get these guys to give us a price, including it? I just don't wanna see that you somehow approve this. PennDOT says, thank you very much, here's your four hundred and whatever thousand. And you say, and we like to use the excess to do this. And they say, that's a different, you go get new approval, maybe you don't get it. I don't know. It's above my pay grade, maybe council has a view, but if there's something you wanna do, just, I don't know the process, so.
No, I don't know the answer to the question. We got a grant. Requirement of the grant was to bid the project. We bid the project. We are required by law to accept the lowest responsible and responsive bid. We're doing that, and we're gonna be able to do the project. I don't know what, if anything, happens to the difference between the grant money and the amount of the project. Perhaps Mr. Kundari knows.
These grants would pay out the work that's been spent. If you receive a grant, a certain amount of money, you have to submit reimbursement forms to these grant agencies, so they can see the expenses that were actually put out for the projects, and they would reimburse you based off of those expenses.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject real quick.
Yes.
So, if I'm understanding what the board, I think what the board is aiming to do tonight is to award the contract for the Business Commons Sidewalk Project, and hand in hand, go back to PennDOT and see if they will, if they will add the other sidewalk to those grant funds, and then we would rebid that project separately in the future. Is that what? Am I summarizing?
I wouldn't wanna make it more complicated. I don't know about the process of...
So, you can only amend a bid up to ten percent?
Is that true? You can only amend it up to ten percent?
Right.
So, ten of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, is that what you're talking about? Or ten percent of eight hundred and eighty thousand? So, we're talking, we can amend it by forty-eight, fifty thousand dollars?
I doubt if that stretch would cost that little.
Maybe that's the law, but maybe PennDOT will cut us a break. I don't know.
We can always start another project.
It's a great thought. It's really a great thought, but, and I'm no legal expert either, but it seems to me if we bid something out, that's what we're getting, exactly what was specified. And I don't, I don't know unless somebody tells me that it's possible to add to a project like that, so.
It doesn't hurt to ask, I don't think it hurts to ask.
I notice, I know that we've had things called a change order, that sort of thing in the past. I don't know if this qualifies as a change order, or, you know, it's just something I hope we can look into, that's all.
I see. I see public comment.
Yes. Hi, good evening. Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk. And first, congratulations to the Little League team, I know they've gone. Thank you to Chief Hearn for his continued diligence with the police and emergency and monitoring Tara Boulevard. Congratulations to the township. I believe they have received the permit for Silo.
Yes.
And thanks for the update. And just to remind everybody, when we proposed the improvement to the sidewalk that we're talking, that Mr. Mack has proposed, we were looking at a grant, and the grant for the two, the Silo Drive and the Tara Boulevard, the bids came in, as we know, over what the grant amounts were. But there was, there were funds available to cover it. What we're talking about here, and I think as you all know, I completely read the grant contracts from PennDOT for Tara and Silo. And I can bring you up to speed, there is a ten percent overage, that is one clause, but there are also letters of adjustment and letters of amendment to an original grant, as long as they don't exceed the original grant amount. And further, that's why I believe Mr. Mack has proposed this as part of a pedestrian safety initiative in Newtown. And for the record, this stretch of sidewalk is connected to Terry Drive, and I believe that is in the scope of this grant and project in the New Town Business Commons. It's adjunct, and the Newtown Business Commons buildings face the Gulf Station and Newtown Walk and the Newtown Trail. I believe Lower Dollington Road is named in this grant also, as part of the Newtown Trail. It's not part of the Business Commons, but I believe it's specified in this grant. So, and because there are, there are forms on the PennDOT contracts for amendments and application, the ten percent doesn't hold to any adjustments or amendments to the original contract, as long as they don't exceed the initial grant amount, which we have three hundred and eighty-four dollars, and I believe the previous speaker said... and I believe the previous speaker said, we have something here to use these funds for, for pedestrian and bicycle safety. They're attached to the Business Commons that this sidewalk project is designed for. There are also clauses in contract for excess funds remaining upon completion of the project. And that would be included in a letter of amendment or a letter of adjustment. And I believe those are all in this grant contract.
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest that the board look into this? Great suggestions from the public. If we can add something to this, I'm sure the township would love to use more of the grant money than the bid amount. Why don't we just have our engineer look into this and report back to the board?
Right. And at the last meeting, I believe the BOS said that the township engineers would be able to provide a timeline for the Silo and Tara projects now that they have the permit...
This is a motion to award a bid for a separate project.
You can come back during public comment, the second round.
Thanks.
Just want to keep it focused on this area, but we will...
Mr. Solicitor, are you asking us to table this?
No, I'm asking you to ask respectfully, Mr. Foyer, to hold his comment on another issue while we debate...
No, I'm talking about what...
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not asking you to table this at all.
Then what are you asking us to do?
I just, I'm just asking you, in the interest of moving forward, to consider whether there may be additional projects that you can add to this grant, but that doesn't mean don't award this grant.
Well, but does that, but does that affect this 488,000?
I have no idea.
I have a question for Mr. Kundari.
Yes.
Is this the Remington Vernick Traffic Engineer in the audience?
He is, yeah.
Have you, can I ask him a question or can you consult with him to ask a question? Are there such things as, that would apply in this case to letters of amendment or letters of adjustment? I mean, is that something that can be explored?
I'm happy to answer that as well. I think to what Mr. Solicitor is saying, we can certainly look into it. It's not a given that they will allow us to use these funds for work that's not in the scope of the grant.
Okay.
So we can certainly look into it. That's not something I can say infinitively tonight, sitting here, if that's something that's allowed.
Right. Understood, understood.
I think you should move forward with awarding the bid on the project. I think that's paramount.
I'd like to go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of awarding the construction, the construction bid for Newtown Business Commons Sidewalk, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
I have another question for engineer.
Yeah, on the engineer report, yes.
Yeah. I mean, it's something I did ask already, but now that we have all the permits for these crosswalks, can we get an estimate and a timeline for the project, at least a starting date?
Yeah, the contracts are being executed as we speak. We just received it from the contractor this week. We sent it, I believe, to the township today. Once we get everything signed and fully executed, we will schedule a pre-construction meeting, go through that process, submittal reviews, some of the administrative things, and we'll look to start construction as soon as possible.
That pre-construction meeting, is that going to be like the Wawa? You walk around or what?
No, this is usually in person at, on a table, going through contract details.
That's just with the contractor?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. We'll move on to our solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The sole item on our report this evening is whether the board wishes to take a position on either of the residential zoning hearing board applications scheduled to be heard on November 7th, as outlined by the Planning Commission report. They are two projects for home improvements. Would the board like to take any positions on those?
Yes, Mr. Mack.
As Peggy mentioned, they requested that the homeowner of one of these, because of the impervious surface, have some kind of mitigation, wastewater mitigation. And I know in a last case we had, we asked you, the solicitor, not to oppose it, but to send a letter reminding the zoning hearing board that this is something recommended by our planning commission.
That's true.
Can we do that with this one?
You can if you want to.
Does the planning commission send...
The planning commission does not send. They recommend to you, you direct me.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to make a motion to do that.
Does the zoning, I mean zoning hearing board receive the planning commission's minutes?
I don't believe so. I do not believe the planning commission minutes are part of the zoning hearing board record.
I think the planning commission solicitor here, could he answer that question?
I believe the synopsis, it's like you heard, it seems it goes to the zoning hearing.
Okay, and in that synopsis, it was mentioned about the stormwater mitigation, so they would see that.
There's no guarantee that they'll see it or even read it or open it, but a letter...
There's no guarantees for anything, but they do get that information.
But a letter from the board via our solicitor would carry more weight. I've just made a motion to do that.
Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our report.
Can I ask a question about Mark Winterstein's property and the fact that he built his front portico and he built a lot of area around his home without permits? Is there, like, do we get repaid for permits or, I mean, he just went?
Yeah, I'm actually consulting silently with the assistant manager as you're speaking. Snyder, thank you. Yes, there is, sometimes this happens. People come back and say, oh, I didn't know I needed a permit. Whether they did or they didn't, we don't know. If this happens, usually they have to come back and get the permit. Obviously, this person needs to get the relief he needs from the zoning hearing board as well, get the permit, and I believe there's a double fee charged, a double permit fee charged as a penalty for not obtaining the permit prior to doing the work.
Good to know. So let me on to the management's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is $6,608,324. Plan action expiration before the board with no action required. This evening, we have Chief Forsyth here to give his monthly chief's report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I'd like to report for the month of September, we responded to 115 calls for service. We completed 78 fire safety inspections in Newtown Township, six use and occupancy permits, one fire alarm permit, and one sprinkler permit. In Newtown Borough, we completed 39 fire safety inspections. Some of our highlights were September 3rd and 4th, we participated in a welcome back to the students at all the schools in Newtown Township and Newtown Borough. September 11th, we responded to a working house fire on Delaware Court, and I'm happy to report that it was about 5:10 in the evening, and we had two career staff trucks, one from Newtown and one from Northampton, on scene within five minutes. The fire was contained to the garage and thankfully, it was, with the help of Northampton's career staff and our career staff, it was contained to the garage, so four to five minute response time, on scene time, is pretty, pretty good. So I take my hat off to the guys that did it. September 9th, we had an executive board meeting for the Fire Association. September 15th, we participated in a touch of truck event at one of the businesses, the Business Park. September 16th, we conducted a monthly officers meeting. This is where the line officers on the operations side of the fire department, we meet and make sure that we're up to par and we come up with our training program for the next month. September 18th and 19th, we presented a kitchen safety program to the students at Council Rock Clay School North. When I went there, it was called Homeec. I have no idea what they call it today, but it's boys and girls. It wasn't like that when I went there, but it was rather interesting. We have a new prop in the firehouse. It's a fire extinguisher prop. The kids had no idea how to use a fire extinguisher, so it was kind of interesting to have that prop and actually be able to teach the staff at the school and the students how to properly use a fire extinguisher. September 30th was the monthly membership meeting for the Fire Association that we have every month. So the training for the month of September, we focused on apparatus and pump operations. So I would be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for the chief on the September report?
I would, I would like to just say, before we move on, there's three gentlemen from the Fire Association tonight, and there was a question about volunteers. Our president, Warren Dallas, is here tonight. Our trustee, Ed O'Sullivan, and the other trustee is Chris Jones. When we talk about volunteers, we are in desperate need of volunteers all the time. I'm happy to say that Chris's 16-year-old son, Chase, just joined the fire department, and he's the fifth generation of the Jones family to be part of our fire department. So there are some of us around that still continue this. And on another note, last Monday, we had a brush fire on Twining Bridge Road, and I don't know whether we insulted the homeowner there so much, but we ended up getting an application from him and he will be taken into the fire department on Monday night. So it's, we always need volunteers. We do not have enough volunteers, so anybody that would like to join, please reach out to us. We'd be more than happy to take you. No experience needed.
Very good. I believe, any further questions or comments? One other additional order of business with your chief Forsyth?
I think you have before you tonight the contract to sign with Glick Fire Apparatus. This is for a total of $2,900,000 for the purchase of two fire apparatus. One is a 2028 Pierce Enforcer 107-foot ladder truck. And the second one is a 2028 Pierce Enforcer Pumper. The pumper will replace the current 2010 we have, which should be replaced next year after 15 years. And the 2028 ladder truck that we're requesting the township purchase will replace the 2008, which will be 20 years old when the new one comes. So the replace program, we are on target. This is a first for us, for the township to purchase these apparatus. And you have the CoStar agreement before you tonight. It's CoStar Contract 013-E22-242. So I am asking the board to sign this contract tonight. This has been a lot of work for us to be able to get to this point, and this is a very exciting time for the fire department and the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, the appropriate motion would be authorization to execute the agreement with Glick Fire Equipment and the amount of $2,940,000 through CoStarz.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
And I'll second it. So a motion and a second. I just want to clarify a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
This is a rather large price tag, but it's not delivered, not to be delivered until like 48 months from now, so.
That's correct.
That would be 2028.
Yes.
We currently have a plan in place, putting away $660,000 a year for the last couple of years. That means it's in the budget this year. So we have a way between now and 2028 to get that 20, 20, 2, 2,940,000. And these trucks will belong to Newtown Township.
That's correct.
With that, I think I've clarified everything that I need to clarify, and I just ask the rest of the board.
So we're not paying the 2,900,000 right away, which when upon delivery, how's that work?
The, the purchase would be made now, the payment would be paid upon delivery.
There's no down payment or anything?
Not at this point. All we have to do is sign a contract that will initiate the process. Unfortunately, it's a 48-month process, so it gives us enough time to see where we're going as far as the financial end of it, but I think we should be in pretty good shape.
Well, the only problem is, well, it's not a problem. I won't be here on the board.
Well, Mr. Mack, I hope that I'm not here either, so I hope there's another fire chief standing in front of you when they come.
So what, we have to plan for the future. Thank you.
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, let me call the question. All those in favor of authorizing me to execute the agreement with Glick Fire Company for the 200, the 2,940,000 through CoStarz, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
And congratulations to all of us and you guys.
Thank you for your very much.
I would like to say in closing, this is a big night for us. Thank you very much. Thank you for, Mike, for listening to me for the last two and a half years. So before I leave, I, I am going to ask everyone, please, please, please do not have any open fires outside of your homes. It is extremely dry. We are having a serious problem with brush fires right now. We've been all over the county, I feel like we've been all over the county pushing brush fires around, so please, until we get some rain, be very, very cautious about starting any fires outside. So thank you very much, and again, I thank the board for tonight's motion.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, there's nothing else under our report.
Okay. And thank you for the gentleman back in the room. Thank you all. All right, that brings us to Mr. Mack to give us the bills, minutes, bills and reports.
All right, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 9 Board of, October 9, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting.
We have a motion and a second. A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes of October 9th, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, five zero.
Okay, I make a motion to pay our bills dated in the bills list of October 23rd, 2024 totaling $667,250.52.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of paying our bills as recorded on the bills list for October 23rd, 2024, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Finally, I make a motion that we approve the total funds transfer of $35,963.80 as per the bills list of October 23rd, 2024.
Second.
Yeah, a second. And any discussion from the board? Any? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our inter-fund transfers, approving our inter-fund transfers of October 23rd, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Mack. That brings us to our second round of public comment. All those... All those who would like to make comment, please come forward. State your name and where you, where you live and.
Charles Foyer in Newtown Walk. And just pursuant to the, the Silo, Sycamore, and Tara crosswalks, I would ask for a timeline as expected. And as I mentioned before, upon, you know, review of the bid request, I asked before, but wasn't given an answer, in the bid request, there was a completion date set of twelve twenty-seven twenty-four, which would indicate that both Silo, Sycamore, and Tara are part of the contract that has been signed by the contractor now, and that is the completion date as dictated by that.
Well, I'll make that, well, ask that question and get you an answer.
The contract has a duration of ninety calendar days from the date of the notice to proceed. That date has yet to be determined. We have to go through that process, like I mentioned before, the pre-construction meeting, and that's when that notice to proceed date is usually scheduled. My guess is that date would be in the next couple of weeks, so figure ninety calendar days from the next couple of weeks, yeah.
Okay. And the other question I have for the board is, if it's possible, I'd like to attend the pre-construction meeting of the crosswalk upgrades. And a note I wrote to myself was, in addition to the PennDOT contracts for their grants, they also have a clause for additional or extra work, and also a clause for funds left over from the original grant amount that aren't spent. So those things are in the PennDOT grant contracts, and I believe, Mr. Chairman, you asked the township engineer to look into that for this purpose. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Frank McCarron, Delancey Court. I have a budget comment, and I talked to Mr. Sanders. It wasn't clear that the next session, there was actually going to be public comments for budget, so I'm making it here, unless you want to wait.
There will be a, a public comment if, if we decide to vote on advertising.
Well, okay, so I don't know the if, so therefore I'm going to give my comment.
Sure.
Okay. So each year, we end our fund with a fund balance that's much better than budget. So 2022, we budgeted year-end of a million five fund balance, and it was five-six, so it was 4.1 million dollars better. 2023, we budgeted a million three, and it was four-one, which was 2.8 better. This year, we budgeted one-eight. This is something I believe Mr. Calabro brought up discussing last year's budget, which was, we seem to always beat budget, I'm getting used to beating budget, and are we going to beat budget again? So that one-eight at the last meeting, this, Mr., the township manager, sorry, mental note, said that the budget was going to be five-two, which is 3.3 million dollars better. So we're three to four million dollars better each of the last three years. So 2025, we're supposed to end at two-five. Is it really two-five? Is it four? Is it five? Is it something? I don't understand why it's so much better. Is it that we really don't know what it's going to be, that there's so many uncertainties that we don't know? Or, or is, are we just, or is this a strategy that we just want to sock some away? You're making all your planning decisions, hiring, not hiring, based on, on the budget number, but it's just, it's, it's sort of like, I've come to expect, well, 2025, 2026, there won't be a tax increase because it's not going to be two-five at the end, it's going to be four, it's going to be five. It's, it's a little, I don't know. I, I, I hope you know. That's, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Good evening, Warren Dallas, Newtown Fire Association. I'd just like to thank the board for approving the purchase of the trucks. Planning is crazy now. It takes four years to receive a new fire truck. We're, it used to be year, year and a half, so thank you for planning ahead for that. Also, my pitch would be to move toward with additional staffing and the new fire stations. Comment was made early night about sleeping in firehouses. We do not have accommodations for people to sleep in either one of our firehouses right now. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas. Any other public comment? Yes. Could we take a brief recess for convenience? So just a brief comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't want to lose any checks. Okay, everybody ready? Let's call back to order. Next order of business is old, old business, and under old business, we have budget discussion and authorization to advertise the 2025 preliminary budget. We'll be taking some questions and comments from the board, and I, I would just like to, like to open for questions after we review a couple of the highlights. And Mr. Lewis, you can tell me if I get anything wrong along the way or, or after I'm done. Just briefly, the manager's budget features no, no tax increase. The general fund ends with a very positive ending fund balance for 2025, mostly because of the carryover from, of a, of a positive fund balance for 2024. Without that fund balance being carried over, the expenses are higher than the revenues. So thank, thank God for that, that carryover each year. There is a projected 2025 general fund balance of 15.46, which is our own policy of have a, having a, ending fund balance of 10%. In the budget, there is a one-time transfer to the fire fund of 1.2 million dollars. There are no reductions in services, no reduction in staffing. There is a $100,000, there's, there's $100,000 more in, in the projected budget, the 2025 budget, than for road paving. So there's, again, $100,000 more in the, in next year's budget for road paving. There is, and I think I got this number wrong, there is a, I have a 686,000, but I think it's seven, 742,000 for capital improvements through, in all departments. Newtown Township millage rate remains lower than two-thirds of the municipalities in Bucks County. This budget also contains some salary adjustments for key management positions to consider, which considers hierarchy of command and the need to remain competitive in today's The last such benchmarking was done in 2021 by ESI. That's, that's my discussion. I would open the floor for questions or comments from the other board members. Anyone? Okay. Ms. Snyder, please.
Mr. Manager, please, for myself and everybody else, explain why the fire fund was taken out of the general fund and no other departments have been removed. I got your answer, so I know the answer, but I'd like everybody to hear the answer.
So this year, the General, Pennsylvania General Assembly passed an amendment to the second-class township code, allowing up to ten mills to be allocated to fire and emergency services, and a total of five mills to be allocated towards, like an ambulance squad. The second-class township code does not allow a department to be separated like that. So that's, planning for that ten-mill rate is why we moved the, all revenues and expenditures, and it gives the board a clear, clear picture of what exactly that department costs.
My next question is, it's more of a, it's a statement and a question. Yeah, it's, it's awesome not having a tax increase, but I see a problem with that as well, and the problem I see is we are not keeping up the rates of inflation, the, you know, we're buying fire trucks, thankfully. We're giving raises. Everybody deserves it, there's no doubt. But with that becomes, there's, we have an obligation to be able to keep up with that year by year, and our rates are very low to begin with. So in my opinion, we need more firefighters. There's no doubt about it. The SAFER grant is about to end next year, the end of next year. That's three firefighters that we have to pay for. We need four additional firefighters, there's no doubt about that. We need that. We don't have it, and we need it. So my statement on that is, I, I think planning for the future is a much better idea than staying stagnant when all other costs are rising. So whatever that entails, whether that be a mill or two, I think that emergency services, specifically fire, needs that, and I would ask the rest of my, of the board members up here to consider what we need to keep up and protect our citizens and our businesses in the township.
Is there a question that needs an answer there?
It's a, it's, I'd like, certainly like to hear opinions on that from other board members, and if the manager has an answer, it certainly I'd like to hear that. I can tell you that every fire meeting I go to, we, the thing that is worrisome is that we don't have volunteers. So I'm looking towards the future of the Fire Association, and that's basically my pitch, and I wouldn't want to be a tax-and-spend person, but I do want to protect our families and our businesses in the best way we know.
Agreed.
That's it for that one.
Does the SAFER grant end in 2025 or '26?
I believe it's 2026.
So this could be something we address.
Twenty-seven.
Okay.
March of 27, early 27.
Because it was March of '24. That was a three-year grant.
Right, so in 2027, we're going to have to assume full payment for firefighters.
And isn't it logical to build towards that at this time? And those three firefighters aren't the only firefighters. We need more firefighters than the ones that we already have, and we luckily got the SAFER grant for, but we need more.
I, I agree, but maybe, I mean, we're going to have to face that if we, we're going to face it in future years for sure, especially when they stop getting paid by the grant.
Again, why, why wait when, as you heard, we need four more firefighters? We need to keep building towards the future. That's all. Everybody knows my opinion about it.
Do you have other questions or?
I don't think I have other questions.
Okay. Mr. Mack, you, well, I'd like to follow up on that. I, I like the idea of having a 24/7, 365-days-per-year coverage of paid firefighters, especially if I'm eating the, what's that steak place?
Capital.
The Capital Grill, and they burn the steak or something like that. And I'm reading about the chief's estimate. I guess in this budget, there's, there's no additional staff to be hired, but you need to, you said you need to hire four more. You had sort of a, a timeline or stepwise process, and it looks like you need 12 additional firefighters. Is, is the, you're looking to have a total of 24 paid firefighters? Is, is that it looking forward?
I can short answer that. The answer to that question is yes. With their current contract, the way it reads, is you have a, a number of firefighters on a truck requirement, and to go to a full-time paid 24/7 operation, you'll need 24 firefighters.
And how many do we have now?
Twelve.
Twelve. Okay. Now I get it. I'm drawing a blank now, but I'll get back to that.
I would just like to say one more thing about that, and that is, we have three drivers for fire trucks, three drivers. That means if one is sick or one is away, you know, that number goes down exponentially, obviously. So another thing that is needed is a driver, is a fire truck driver, a paid fire truck driver that's available on a schedule.
Are the, are the three drivers that you're mentioning, are they volunteers? I mean, because I think all the paid staff are drivers.
Yes, there's three drivers.
But at night, there's three drivers. Got it?
Can I have a?
Yes.
More comments, maybe?
Bing, bong, ball's in your court again.
Okay. I'm trying to, this budget is very, very difficult to. I'm trying to, this budget is very, very difficult to compare. The format is, I would say, not optimal. And it's, uh, difficult to compare this budget to next, last year's budget. And so, I, I think I'm beginning to understand why the fire, all the fire money is in the, in the fund. That's to be able, in the future. We haven't passed that ordinance about being able to raise our dedicated fire tax to 10 mills. Right now, we're at four mills. Is that the maximum allowable right now without us doing this ordinance?
So, we're existing at four mills, yes, but we did that by referent, voter referendum.
Voter referendum?
Years and years ago, it was passed by voter referendum to go to four mills.
So how can we raise the dedicated tax?
So, to go to that 10 and, 10 mills and 5 mills that I just referred to in the amendment, the, the board needs to pass an ordinance, basically allowing up to 10 and 5 mills, but referring back to the...
Even if we wanted to do it in this budget, up to two mills, we still need that?
So, the ordinance itself is, would be more of an administrative function. Keep in mind, every year, the board passes a resolution setting the millage tax rate that needs to be submitted to DCED. The ordinance, the way Mr. Sander and I have, have discussed it, would be drafted, referring to that resolution annually. So, it would be an ordinance basically saying, we can allocate up to 10 mills and 5 mills respectively, but look at this resolution that's passed on an annual basis for the actual tax, tax rate.
Okay, but we haven't done that yet.
No, we haven't done that yet.
And if we are interested in raising the millage to six mills, we would need that.
Yes.
But, in order to do that, we then cannot advertise this budget. Because once you advertise it, you, can you, we can raise the tax, we can still do that, right?
You can, you can, you can change this budget right now any way you wanted to.
So if we just said we want to change it, then you could go ahead and advertise it?
And then advertise it, yes.
No problem. Okay. I get it. But, still, the, you know, that 10% maximum ordinance has to be in effect, no?
No, it has to be in effect. It doesn't really give a timeline, so it would be early next year that we work to pass that ordinance.
I just want to make sure everything is kosher.
Right.
You know? Thanks for that. But I have some questions, again, getting back to the format. One of the complications is to try to compare salaries of the executive staff. And I notice, for example, three of the administrative staff, you have a combined in the budget of 310,000, and I'm assuming that's for you and your assistant. Can you tell me what your salary is, and, out of that?
So, my, the manager's salary in that number, 310, is 180.
180. And the difference is?
130.
And then Olivia's in there too.
Oh, that's right, Olivia's in there too.
Olivia's in there too?
Right. And that would be, I believe, 80.
So you're at, what'd you say, 185?
180.
180.
And Catherine's at 130?
That's correct.
And Olivia's at 80?
Yes.
And together, I think you mentioned, together, looking at these numbers from 2024, it was 268,000. And I calculated that's about a 16% increase.
Probably.
That's a pretty hefty increase there.
Yep. There's, there, there is no pool of applicants out there for these positions. And the other towns around us have realized that, and they've increased salaries. I'll use North Hampton Township as an example. This year, their manager made $240,000 a year. So, these towns are realizing that they have to start shelling out the money for these positions. You have, like I said before, a pool of very talented people here that we're trying to retain, because to put another body in that position is going to cost this township more money to get a qualified applicant. And it's also, it's going, your pool of applicants will be extremely minimal.
Okay, and I hear the police are saying the same thing. They're not finding it difficult?
It, it, true.
They're finding it difficult to find recruits?
Yep.
And again, in, in that instance, there's 474,000 for management salaries. So, can you tell us what the chief's salary is, and what else is included in that number?
So, there's the three command staff in that number. It's Chief Hearn, Captain Jason Harris, and Lieutenant Chris Joseph.
Do you have the salaries available for?
So, why don't I just send you the salaries that we had proposed?
Okay, I, I was hoping you would mention that, so people would know. But, the other thing I couldn't find also was for the emergency services department.
So that's in the 03 fund, that's in the, in the fire protection fund. All those expenses have been moved to that fund. So if you look under 0341100, I'm sorry. 03411122, it says fire chief salary. That's the fire chief, and it's the deputy chief combined.
Can you just tell me the number, so I don't have to look it up here?
I believe the fire chief would be at 140, and the assistant, deputy fire chief would be at 127.5.
Okay. Well, thanks for that. Now, every year, I think you mentioned, we're running out of deficit.
Yes, there's a structural deficit in the budget.
That means that the revenue co, uh, total is less than the expenditure.
That's correct.
No matter what's, you say is going to be left over in the budget, there's still a deficit. And I think you warned that if this continues, this is likely to continue, and at some point, taxes will need to be raised just to cover that kind of deficit spending.
Yes, you're correct.
All right. So, in, in addition to the fire department money, we have problems with the, I guess that's the general fund, being under financed. And, looking at revenues, I think you also indicated that there's a trend in decreasing revenue, like earned income tax, state and federal grants, et cetera. Is that the true, that the earned income tax is going down? Can you give us some numbers on, on that? I'm sorry if I, I didn't send this to you.
No, you didn't. Earned income tax. The, the resident EIT, we're projecting next year to increase by $100,000. Non-resident.
To increase, did you say?
Increase by $100,000. Uh, non-resident EIT is anticipated to, is budgeted to decrease by?
Oh, I get it.
Roughly $100,000.
Is the non-resident portion of that.
Right. The delinquent is budgeted to remain the same at 200,000. And then the real estate transfer taxes are budgeted to remain the same at 800,000.
All right. Also, I, I think it was mentioned that a lot of, several departments requested more personnel. And a number that particularly stood out to me is the Public Works Department. And they requested a significant number of personnel. How is that going to be remedied? Your staff is saying, we need more workers.
It's going to take this board to raise taxes to the operation.
So that's another source of tax.
Correct.
Revenue that we need.
Yes. Or another revenue stream. I mean, if, for some reason, EIT explodes, and we don't see a, a generally stagnant trend, then we'll look to bring on more staffing in departments.
Okay. So I don't know what the total of all those tax increases might be, but down the road, looks pretty significant.
That's cr, I mean, you look at neighboring towns that we constantly get compared to. And you look at North Hampton at 28 mills. That doesn't include that, and you look at Middletown, and you look at the comparable tax rates of the town that, that we get compared to.
What is, you know, what Middletown's millage rate is?
Not off the top of my head, it was in my...
All right, well, thank you for those answers, I don't have...
Middletown is 19.
19.
2025. No wonder they have such good video quality on their board of supervisors.
Both Middletown and North Hampton have paid fire. Is that a number? Right.
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Is, um...
Daytime.
Yeah, daytime, I think, and, uh, North Hampton is 24/7.
Thank you.
My last question would be, if we don't raise taxes this year, what is, what are we going to have to do next year? What's your opinion? What, for, at least four mil, I would think, if we don't raise taxes this year? Would that be correct, and would you assume that?
I, I can't project that off the top of my head, but I will say that there's a strong possibility that you'll either be continuing to eat into that fund balance number next year, or having to increase the taxes in several funds, meaning the fire fund, the fire hydrant fund, possibly the ambulance squad fund if they need more revenue, along with the general fund.
Any other questions from the other board members? I guess I, I have a process question again. We could, we could hang this budget this evening. Changes in it, but it would, the clock would start over again. So...
If, if you exceed the, the 10% in aggregate, or 25% in any major category.
Right. And one, one thing I, I would like to do is have the public be able to see it sooner than later. But, I mean, I think in your original letter to us about your, when you presented the budget, you had projected hanging it on November 13th and passing it on the, the, the December meeting.
Yes, that's right. That would give the, the required timeline in between the two dates for the advertising, because it takes a few days to get it into the paper as well.
Well, so the advertising date begins when it's actually in the paper.
Yeah, it's not like when...
Sometimes they screw up.
More than, more than not.
But, in terms of increases, like tax increases, you can't do it if you advertise the budget. It won't be possible. You're increasing...
It's still the same number. So the 1.2 million dollars that would be transferred from the general fund to the fire fund would just be reduced by, say, if the board passed a 2-mill increase, roughly $660,000. And that money would re, remain in the general fund, instead of being transferred.
So I'm not getting what you're saying. Even if it's advertised, we can come back and say, we want this 2-mills?
Yeah.
Fire tax?
Right.
Okay.
Because there's still time.
Right.
In November, December.
Well, after it's advertised, right?
Yes. Would it have to be re-advertised if we make, that changes more than 25%?
It's more than the 10%.
Yeah. I'm, I guess I would ask if there, if there's a motion to...
I just have a question in regards to the EIT tax. It, I'm, I'm assuming that doesn't reflect a full year of residents who may have bought in Arcadia at this time?
Probably not, no.
Okay. And, and those homes sold for approximately 1.5 million?
In, in that range, yes.
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna be under the assumption that it's a household income of maybe 200,000? Just ballpark? And there's 60 homes, correct?
Yes.
So on a full, full year of collection, and not that we get all of this EIT, we're talking about $12 million, just from that development?
No.
No?
I'd have to do the math.
Maybe I'm, maybe it's 1.2 million, maybe I'm, I'm adding another zero.
What is it?
Times 60 homes. No, I'm talking about total amount.
Yeah.
Total amount, 12 million.
Half.
But then we get 50% of that?
Right.
So we get 6 million?
Sixty thousand.
Wait, wait, half of 12 million is 60,000? Okay, that comes to the township. And what, where's the other go?
It's split, yes. Split between the school district.
How does that total 12 million?
12 million is what they need.
Right. Wow. So 60,000 comes to us. And then, you're saying 60,000 goes to the school? That's...
It's split.
Okay, 120,000.
Right.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Well, anyway, that's 60,000 additional onto our resident EIT, just from that. Now, we have Toll Brothers building 45 homes, which I'm gonna say probably go for the same amount of, same amount of funds. So we could be increasing our EIT, resident EIT tax, by maybe $100,000. Is that in the budget now? Okay.
Yeah, that's why we increased it by 100,000.
I don't see an increase of 100,000. I see it going from 396...
No, that's the, that's the year-end projection.
Okay. So the budget was 5 million?
Was the budget, right. So 5,100 is...
Okay. So those, those two figures are going to increase by $100,000. Now, hypothetically, if a business came in here from New Jersey, say we were attracted a barrel lynch or something like that, on non-resident, we collect 100% of it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, not, not that we have anyone going out there promoting out-of-state, but I know that Ben Salem is always promoting out, out-of-state workers coming into Ben Salem. And, you know, they also have the Parks Casino, which contributes to the township. But, with our redevelopment and re, reconstruction of the Business Commons, there may be a possibility of attracting some out-of-state industry to come to Newtown. Our location is, is right off of 95. We're close to Philadelphia, Princeton. So I mean, I, I think this was the attraction when they were looking for someone to buy the Lockheed Martin property. But then KVK Tech bought it for a bargain, which no one still seems to know the reason why. And I think when there was a study done by the county, those are some of the attractions that were built in, basically. So, EIT tax may go up a little bit, not much. It's not going to compensate for any kind of tax increase. But, projecting into the future, there could be other things involving non-resident EIT tax, which may cause this to go up. Now, it's gonna be incremental, and I agree, we all know, we... Now, it's going to be incremental, and I agree, we all know a tax increase is eminent. But I'm looking at a budget right now with no tax increase, no effect to services, maintaining the personnel that we have. And I, I, I just see this as a win-win situation for the current time. I'm not saying in the future, we, we have to take into consideration tax increases, which is, you know, always hard for anyone to, to take into consideration. But I think this budget right now fulfills what we need for the twenty-twenty-five period. With that being said, I would make a motion to hang this budget, the twenty-twenty-five budget, so that we can move on and get this advertised.
It would be a motion, is there a second?
I would second that.
Give a motion and a second. I, I wanted to ask, I, I believe I read somewhere that the transfer tax is, the projected transfer tax for the toll development is in this budget. Is it figured in this budget?
It's figured into the total for the transfer tax, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Thought I read that somewhere. And in twenty-three, we had over a million dollars, and twenty-four, it looks like it's about the same, eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand. And eight hundred thousand this year, projected for twenty-twenty-five. Okay. I just wanted to be sure it told us in there. Any other questions?
Yes, just for clarification. If this is advertised and we do want to raise taxes, say two mil, what you're saying then is it'd have to be re-advertised?
It would have to be re-advertised if it exceeds the ten percent. So.
If it exceeds ten percent of what?
The, the total.
Oh.
Right. So it's a percent base, so if you wanted, if you wanted to raise the millage in the General Fund by two mils, it might not trigger that ten percent. If you wanted to put it in the Fire Fund, it may. Ten percent, depending on what the mill rate.
Well, could we split it up? Maybe have one mil in the General Fund, one mil in the Fire?
That's up to the board.
I mean, would that be kosher?
Don't know without knowing the mill rate and doing the calculations.
Do the calculations.
That's about three hundred and thirty thousand, is it?
Right. I, I don't, I don't know. That wouldn't, the direction would have to come from the board.
So if it's over ten percent of the fund.
Of that line item, yes.
We would have to re-advertize, but if it's not over ten percent.
You wouldn't have to re-advertize.
We could do point eight mil, point seven, whatever it is to keep under the ten percent. I can't hear you, Kathy. You don't have a microphone?
I don't.
I, I have too.
You also have sufficient time to re-advertize. It only needs to be re-advertized for ten days.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Great, thanks for clarification.
So if we want to change it at the November thirteenth meeting, there'd be time to advertise for the November twenty-sixth meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what is the final number in the General Fund?
Give me a minute.
Sure. Projected.
So the total revenues. I'm sorry, total expenditures are sixteen point three seven three million, and the fund balance forward estimate is two point five three million.
Okay. And could we transfer roughly six hundred thousand from the General Fund and attribute it to the Fire Fund and whatever we want to put it out to? In essence, not raising taxes, but using our General Fund to soften the blow of a tax increase?
Yes, that's what's currently proposed, is to transfer one point two million dollars to the Fire Protection Fund to offset the deficit in that fund.
But it still gives us a.
It still leaves a fund balance of two point five million, yes.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm just looking that we do have money to play around with, so to speak, if we wanted to, you know.
Reallocate.
Transfer, reallocate another mil or two mil to something else. Now, it may drop us below the ten, the ten percent benchmark, but during the course of the year, we may start getting revenue in from EIT and so on. So I, I, I mean, that, that ten percent of, of the budget, I, I, I mean, I've seen our budget go way below the ten percent mark, and we've always, we've always survived in regards to additional revenue coming in or grants being offered to compensate for spending any kind of funds, so I, I don't know. That, that's a consolation to raising taxes is using the money we have now.
Okay. Mr. Davis, did you have anything to contribute?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, before we call the question, we need to ask for public comment on this motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion from the board at this time? From the public?
Frank McCarron. So when I listen to what you have to say, a couple of things come to mind. One of which, I'm a little concerned, I, I get what the law says about doing with this Fire Protection Fund and having a ten mil tax versus the four you have under what you have now. But as, as you say, yeah, it highlights what, what it costs you at the Fire Department. I, I get a little nervous down the road that people think, oh, there's this big tax increase related to fire, where really it's, no, we don't want to take a million two out of the General Fund in twenty-twenty-six and move it over, we don't want to put any over. So we have to make up, we need four mils to make up for the General Fund, not sending any over. So sending more money over now, I think is a good idea. The second is, by moving the operations, the firefighters over to this general, from the General Fund, you keep this General Fund reserve, you save a minimum ten, minimum fifteen percent, but you're sort of creating a, a second General Fund. I mean, the fire, all the fire expenditures are there, overtime, everything else. Shouldn't you be maintaining a fifteen percent cushion in that fund? Maybe you are, I don't know. But I mean, it seems to me, if this is now just going to be a different, a sub-operation, well, if you have fifteen percent in the general, then the sub-operation have fifteen percent. Because it's going to, it's going to, it's not, it's not a fixed thing. It's, it's got to have overtime, it's going to have things that change. I, I just, I'm not sure how this is all going to mechanically work. So it's just something to think about. The other thing you could do, I mean, honestly, twenty-twenty-four budget, million eight was budgeted at year-end, turned out to be five-two. This two-five, you could, you could say, I'm going to leave a million nine, I'm moving six hundred thousand over, because I honestly don't think it's going to be a million nine, it's going to be three, it's going to be whatever it's going to be. And then you just have to decide, do you want to move that six hundred thousand over? A, it would give you a cushion, but B, and maybe you need a cushion if, if you're trying to do this fifteen percent. But maybe that also say, well, let's hire firefighters. Because if you think down the road, if you're at four mils, that's what you get now, four mils, right? You get three by, by resolution, and then you got a referendum to do the other one. And then you do this law, which I read, seems to say a notwithstanding language, so it's not four plus ten, it's ten instead of the four. Maybe I'm wrong, but you're at four. If it's million two, you don't want to continue, that's another four in twenty-six. In two thousand, twenty, twenty-two-seven, safer grant goes away, that's another two. So you're at ten. You're, you're going to be at ten, just to pay for what you have today in today's dollars. In twenty-six dollars, twenty-seven dollars, you need more than ten. You, you need this, this General Fund is going to continue to give money over. So you might as well do it now. Either raise the tax now, raise something now. I mean, when you had E-Consult, they didn't say wait that, down the road. They said, you know you have a shortfall, you've isolated what the shortfall is here. Maybe the General Fund's going to have super wonderful numbers that you can just contribute all you want, but it just, it just seems to me you've got to do something to shore up this, this Fire Protection Fund, since you're, since you're going to follow this law and go this way, you've structured it that way. It's an operating fund in my mind, it needs, it needs the same fifteen percent. Anyway, those are just some thoughts. I'm going to get away when this budget comes out, so you're not going to see me, you know, actually arguing this budget.
Appreciate your thoughts. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of hanging the budget, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Any other old business? Any other new business?
I have just one item. A resident informed me about invasive species of plants that may be invading our town. It's bamboo. And they, she was saying that it's hard to recognize, and it can grow up to ten feet, not in height, but grow out per day. And then she said specifically along the bypass, somewhere near the development that Phil mentioned, I'm not sure, along the road there, I'm not sure who owns the land that she's claiming. But this was discussed at my Zoom meeting, and I think Elaine McCarron was on there. She's the Chair of the Environmental Advisory Council, and she said she would look into that. So I'm kind of just warning people about invasive bamboo plants.
I, I think we addressed that a.
Right, we have something.
And I, I, but it's in regards to homeowners and the, and the property line. If they were to plant bamboo, I think they have to be forty feet from the property line, because not the bamboo growing upward, it has to go underneath, and it's caused problems in other people's property. But I think we had passed in something a few years ago in regards to particularly bamboo.
Well, she just claims it's all around, so I don't know if there's anybody in violation of that.
But is it on private property? I mean, it could have, or it could have been there way before.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm just trying to transmit her concern, and I know we have some, something about invasive plants we need to control. And if it's on the bypass, it's visible, maybe we can determine if there's anything we can do about that.
Yeah, just, I guess, get the particulars of the property and the boundaries and stuff like that.
It looks like there is a comprehensive bamboo ordinance in here. Chapter ten, part one A of the Code of Ordinances talks about bamboo with definitions and removal required and all kinds of other pro. Things, so perhaps we can look at that and see if it covers what we want it to cover.
We just have to find out where the bamboo is.
Well, you just do like I, the while I did a drive-by, you can do a drive-by.
Someone told me there was somewhere on Tyler Walk's upper entrance.
Somebody who knows how to recognize. I don't know how to recognize bamboo unless they're a polar bear or.
Straight, straight stock. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Any other older new business? I'm looking at my, I think, any reason for an executive session this evening?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. With that, and without objection, I'll adjourn the meeting. See you, see you November thirteenth.